Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of our community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by city council. Tonight's cases are intended to lead scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we'll hear from the applicant or the representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. There is one deviation from the rules involving the One Gas Agenda item tonight. The governing body remanded this matter to the planning commission to consider public comments concerning the changes offered by One Gas, which were considered at the December 19th meeting. One Gas will present those changes tonight, and public comment will be limited to those changes. Chris, please take the role.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Freed?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Mr. Calp?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Tobobin?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
We have two commissioners who are absent, Mr. Pryzner and Mr. Nager, but we do have seven present for a quorum.
Thank you, Chris. Number B, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Calp? Move approval as submitted by staff.
Thank you.
Second.
Chris, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Calp?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Declaration of Conflict of Interest: Ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff.
Mr. Chair, I do have some connection to the owner and maybe also counsel for the matter relating to the Mission Ridge subdivision, number two, but I do not believe it will affect my ability to act impartially.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Calp?
I had a, just like a sidewalk conversation with an individual who's interested in the rehearing matter, but nothing transpired that would affect my view of the matter one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. We'll go into action items. Public hearing of PUD 22-05 by One Gas Inc., City of Topeka, and Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Kansas City in Kansas. Staff presentation. Commissioners, I will give a very brief summary of the changes that the applicant made following the November public hearing. And then, I'm fairly certain the applicant will want to get up and talk about those too. That's why I'm keeping that pretty brief. So if we look at the revised PUD plan, there's a few things that were changed here. The CNG building, the compressed natural gas building, and the fueling stations were moved to the north fence line. Those were previously on the south fence line. The west property line buffer was increased to 32 feet. The south property line buffer was increased to 30 feet. And within that south property line buffer, the landscape now includes larger evergreen-type trees to create a visual screen from the south. And it's important to note that those plantings will be planted outside of the fence within that buffer. One other thing, too, is the applicant included light schematic design criteria and also a location graphic that was part of the revisions as well. Staff recommendation essentially stays the same from December. The key point there, after consideration of the public comment on the changes submitted by One Gas, staff recommends approval based on those other three items within that recommendation. With that, Mr. Chair, that ends my presentation. Thank you. Mr. Warner, any questions to staff? Mr. Calp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, we have in our packet a letter dated December 8, 2022, from SBB Engineering that lists the changes. Is this an accurate listing of all the changes that were made following the November hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll move on to applicant presentation.
All right, just good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time. I've just got a brief statement, just kind of run through real quick, and then we'll talk a little bit about the four different components. My name is Nathan Jameson. I'm with One Gas. And then I'll also have Mark Boyd with SBB Engineering assisting me. You know what, when we began this a few months back, and we reached out to the City of Topeka to just really understand the journey and what all it involved, this was something new that we were going through, and we wanted to make sure that we were abiding by the overall process. You know, in this initial meeting, we were very transparent about our intentions for, you know, using this property that's being underutilized with the plans to build a much-needed warehouse space, you know, the type of vehicles we're going to utilize. In addition, we emphasized during these meetings the desire to be sensitive to the concerns and the needs from our neighbors. That was something we knew, because we knew it was going to be a different change for them. You know, the initial phases of the request, we also reached out to Hayden High School administration to share the information, because we wanted them to be aware of what's taking place. You know, our discussions included the proposed warehouse, volume of vehicles, type of vehicles, their entry and exit times, and even the traffic that there has been discussed is still going to be less than it was pre-pandemic. I know sometimes that's hard to remember, but it really is going to be less. And the school's support of this request is evident, as they are cosigners of our application. You know, during our first planning session back in November, when we met with all of you, we again emphasized our intent to be sensitive and accommodating to our neighbors, as you can see with what we were able to move around and we agreed to, because we think that was the right thing to do. We appreciated your comments. Accordingly, you know, our plan now includes the following modifications: the increasing of the green belt size, the incorporating of mature trees in the landscape plans, moving the compressor station, you know, and then the three fast fuel stations, which are not commercial. These are private behind closed fence. Like I said, just utilized by our 30 trucks that we would have. And then also identifying options for lighting to minimize impact on neighbors, as we'll talk a little bit more about lighting, and Mark will. You know, we don't have any light poles along the south property line, and so, because that's going to be just at the eight-foot mark to help assist with that. You know, our neighbors and community still to this day remain at the forefront of our plans and continue to be a key focus as we move forward. You know, another aspect of our plan that's essential in understanding and fully why we are bringing this request now is the location of our current service center in relation to the bridge closure that's part of the Polk Quincy Viaduct. You know, centralizing our properties on Gage Boulevard will enhance our team's access to major thoroughfares throughout the city. So it's something that's going to be helping us to be more centralized. You know, developing an existing property within our community while addressing operational efficiencies supports our commitment for Kansas Gas and One Gas to deliver safe, reliable natural gas to our customers and our community. You know, we believe and we are confident that this rezoning request benefits Topeka and the company alike. Thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to Mark Boyd.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mark Boyd with SBB Engineering, we're here on behalf of the applicant. So I do want to point out the four items that you asked us to look at at our November meeting. Those were to try and find a better location for the compressed natural gas station, look at the buffer, landscape, and lighting. We felt like we did that. We looked and in some cases went beyond what you asked us to do. You know, I do want to point out that the changes that I atomized on the December 8th list involved a little bit more than those four changes. As we moved things around on the site, we had to find room and relocate things, caused us to make some adjustments. So that is a complete accurate list of the changes that have made to date, and we have not made any additional changes since that December submission. Lighting, I have with us tonight Jeff Romine of Brack Associates that can get into more detail with site lighting if you so choose. We discussed in general what the site lighting will be comprised of at the December meeting with the wall packs and the 30-foot poles. If you have comments or suggestions that get any deeper than that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. I guess I'd like to also point out two things in the staff report that I saw late. It was actually brought to my attention that in the staff report, there was no mention of a vehicle maintenance building. However, on the PUD itself, it's noted as a 7,000-square-foot vehicle maintenance building. And I just want to point that out on page four of the staff report, that under buildings, it doesn't mention anything about this building. But it has been all along in the original PUD document. And probably the second thing to point out would be also on page four of the staff report, there's a note that mentions down there about there will be no light spillage at the property line under the other comment. Again, if you go back to the notes of the PUD that's been there since the beginning, note number five under utility notes mentions that, you know, we are meeting the city standard of no more than three-foot candles at the property line, which is standard for any site development project in town. I just want to point those two things out to you. Other than that, we'll just let you ask us questions, and I guess I would ask respectfully to let us respond if anything new comes up that, you know, needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, just real quick. I've got two plans that both say revision one, and one has the lighting on it and one does not. And one of those plans reflects three charge stations and one reflects four.
Okay. Probably a bit of timing in there. The lighting plan was actually a plan that I submitted to Jeff to look at. That was actually before we had made all the changes to the December submittal. So there's really only been one revision to the plan, and that was from the November public hearing that you asked us to look at to the December resumittal.
So is it going to be three or four charging stations on the north?
Three.
Three stations. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question two.
Commissioner Biden?
Just out of curiosity, I notice on the evergreen trees on the south side, that the mention is made of larger trees. Can you give me an idea of what the dimensions or the height of those might be?
Well, I guess I had in mind when I put those on there, and we won't know until we get a landscape architect in here to specify what those are, but I think I have in my mind something in the neighborhood of like a Chinese juniper that might get to 20 to 30 feet tall.
Okay.
And, you know, 8 to 10, 12 feet in diameter.
Okay.
You know, honestly, it's been long enough now, I can't remember what we specified for the spacing, but I'm thinking that was like 12 to 15 feet apart.
Okay.
And that's what I was kind of thinking of.
All right.
To almost act like a windro or a shelter belt.
The initial intent to go with that was that they would be, like I said, I believe one of the requirements or requests was for that eight-foot tall white lantern fence was for the trees to be at least that height. That way, it would help speed up the barrier that has been requested, so that way they would grow taller faster and be at that original height.
All right. And I also, I think, had noticed that you were going to try to save as many of the mature trees as you could. Have you done any more detailed look at that to get a better idea?
Not that of any more detail. We have done a site survey since then and identified the trees on the south perimeter. And there's, you know, there's a handful of trees that are worth saving, some oaks and typical hardwoods. A lot of it is, you know, the elms and shrub brush. So, you know, we'll save what we can that's along the property line. I think that 30-foot setback is going to allow us to keep a lot of what's there.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. So, Mark, I assume, these are lighting questions, but I assume you guys are doing a photometric plan, that you're able to achieve the three-foot candle?
We have not yet, only because this is so early, we haven't done any detailed site design. So this is, you know, we've got some conceptual lighting on paper that we tend to adhere to, you know. How it's actually going to play out, you know, we don't have that information yet.
Okay, but it'll need to be part of the approval process.
It will be a part of the...
Yeah. So a couple of other things I wanted to point out. I like the idea of the lights on the interior side of the fence at seven feet tall. That's a good design, and I like the idea that there's only pole lights along the north property line that are nearly 200 feet from the residential properties.
If I could say, I think right now initially, I think there's one that's approximately 125 feet away on the west side from the neighbors.
I do, okay.
But like I said, if that's something that needs to be removed and we don't have it on the north side, that's not a concern. That can be done very easily if that's what needs to occur.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't see that one.
Not a problem.
I just saw them along the north, so that's good.
If there's only one, I believe, over there, so there might be two, maybe, but...
Yeah, I do see the two there. So I have a couple of thoughts. One of them would be getting rid of probably those two that you just brought up.
Not a problem.
The other ones would be all of the wall packs that are on the south side of both these buildings. And I understand why you have wall packs, and they're mainly for security. But there's four of them alongside the south side of the 7,000-square-foot building, and there's three of them along the south side of the other building. If there's any way to reduce those or have some sort of cutoff on those, because those things are a rectangle that just shine out into the sky. Now, they're not totally really bright like a parking lot light would be. And I don't even know if they make a cutoff for a wall pack, and maybe Mr. Romine might be able to talk about that. But that would be another suggestion.
Yeah, we don't have a problem. Like I said, right now, traditionally on our designs, if we have an overhead door, we usually put a wall pack above it just for safety and security, but we have no concerns if we reduce that down to maybe two, just in terms of providing some lighting. So if you have lighting at seven feet, you know, on one side, you know, it'd be good to have something on the other side just to support, you know, in case there's an emergency and our trucks do need to come through and pick up materials. That's mainly what's for is more for safety and secure. And also with the cameras, it would allow our cameras to pick up any type of motion and unwanted visitors as well. But that's not a problem to reduce that from four to two or whatever is needed, and we can work with the height as well. That's not a problem, sir.
Okay. I'd like to see that reduced, and then possibly like to see what the wattages are. Those are typically 400 watt wall packs, and maybe they're reduced. I don't know. Just some things to think about. And so just reducing those on both sides of that building would help, I think. And I think that's all I have.
I just had a quick question. In your presentation, you said you had a conversation with Hayden High School?
Yes.
But you didn't say what the results were.
They signed our application, so they are on board with it. They're in support of this.
Okay.
We've been very forthcoming with them from very early on, so, like I said, they would not have signed it if they did not know what they were getting into.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, we consider them a partner.
Okay, I guess just as a reminder, the north 50 feet of this site that's being rezoned is actually Hayden property. That's why they're a signature to the application.
Any other comments? When I was looking at this, I think the wall packs were kind of one of my big red flags, too. Being 15-foot tall also, maybe they could be over the door and then maybe just be the type that have a cutoff going down, and that's something I'd like to have that looked at as well. Are there any other questions for the owner at this point? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to public testimony. As a reminder, this will be four minutes each person, and it's related to the changes that were made to the PUD. Is there anybody that would like to get up and speak on the matter?
My name's Ed Kleema. I live at, and my wife and I live at 501 Southwest Gage Court. We're about 120 feet from the south border of this property. I'm going to try to maintain my notes are a little more extensive than what you said you were going to allow, but tonight I'm going to ask you to vote no concerning the spot rezoning of this application of One Gas and the City of Topeka and the Roman Catholic Change from R1 to I1, especially right where we are at, not only will devastate the values of our properties, but also drive down the quality of life in our neighborhood. That eight-foot white fence is going to be enough to have people really be concerned about living in that area, but also the fact that, excuse me, we're going to be dealing with 30-foot tall lights on the north side. I understand that. There's going to be a fueling station, fueling trucks, and that could, with compressed natural gas, and that could be on a fairly regular basis. But one of the things that they talked about, storage and a place to park, but now we've got a maintenance building with four bays. And then my next concern was looking at the lighting studies. There's actually to the west and south side of the building and then the off, the additional extension of that other building, there's nine of those floodlight packages that are going to be shining 15 feet above the ground is where they're mounted. So it will be, it'll light up the back neighborhood and also light up my yard, I'm sure, from that standpoint. Description of a I1 excludes uses that are obnoxious and offensive, which includes many of the things I've listed above. And with 24 operation, we're going to have noise, dust from spoil bins, smells. It's not going to increase the quality of life in our neighborhood by any means. Also, that description of that I1 prohibits any residential dwellings within it, but we can stick them right across the fence, and there's no concern for that. That bothers me quite a bit from that standpoint. And currently, we've got an industrial power unit that's operating on the property with a generator, and we're driving that generator, and it's a large unit. Produces high decibel ratings, and I see no plan for that being changed from that standpoint or mitigating that at all. The other thing I noticed in any of the plans, there wasn't anything talking about all the runoff is going to be created with all the concrete. My understanding, that entire area is going to be concreted. So are we just going to run it back into the neighbors' yards from their standpoint? I apologize for my list. The last thing I had was, is there any plans for if there's a release of compressed natural gas at the filling station? Or if there's an explosion, much like the propane filling station had down south this past week? I encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Are there any other? Please come forward.
I live on the corner of that, and I've talked to a lot of people that have kids at Hayden. They're not real happy with a large gas compressor being that close to their kids. Now, as far as the Archdiocese is concerned, I've talked to one of the gentlemen there, and I have an appointment Saturday with Archbishop to talk to him, had been under construction. I don't think that he's been aware of any of this. Also talked to one of the officials at Hayden. They weren't even aware of a gas compressor station being built there. So there's just been a lot of stuff that hasn't been let out. The lights, they'll bother me a little bit. That's fine. But the main thing is, do we want some, I'm sure that they're going to make it as safe as possible, but we still want something that, like that, that close to kids? That's the main thing that bothers me. And I'll find out more Saturday when I talk to the Archbishop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Calp.
Could I ask a contrary question? Sir?
Sir? Couldn't, I'd like to ask a question.
Got a question for you, sir. Your question about the gas generator?
Yes.
Did you mention your concern about it being moving closer to the north line, but that's away from your property, isn't it?
Right.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
I have children, though. I've had, mine are all grown, but I've been a parent, so I'm concerned with my children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for that? Any other patrons that would like to speak?
And before I start my clock, I'd ask Chris Wagers to pull up the pictures I sent in earlier, please. And my name's Jonathan Kleema. I'm the owner of 432 Southwest Gage Court Circle. And I wanted to pull these up here. I took these, and so this is the property that faces directly towards the back. And what I wanted to highlight here is we're talking about an eight-foot fence. Maybe we'll have some trees. We have no idea what height they're going to be, maybe larger is what we're told. And as you can see, we have a second story. So our back of our house here is 20 feet tall at those windows approximately. So we have an eight-foot fence. So now if you go to the next picture, so that's the actual survey stake that he mentioned before, so approximately 12, 15 feet from my deck. And then if you go to the next picture, please, this is going to be my view. So that's the type of trucks that they have downtown. That's my assumption of what they're going to have there. He mentioned 30 trucks. I know, you add that up, that's probably pretty close. If you add in their other location across the street there, if you go to the next slide, now that's our view from our second story, same yellow pipes that they shared at the first meeting. And if you go to the final picture, I get more picture, or we get another view of these trucks. And so what I would ask you is if we have an eight-foot fence, we have a 20-foot tall house that we bought as residential facing not open industrial storage, and now we have this view, that's what our view is going to be. And then I appreciate that you all catching the 15-foot tall lights facing our house. I appreciate that. That was a good note. But lights of any height are going to shine on our house at night. And so the people in the house are, that's now their view, is lit up windows at night in a residential neighborhood. And then what I get a little upset about is the traffic. So I heard One Gas mentioned it at night, and it was said the first one, it's going to be the same amount of traffic as pre-COVID. Number of vehicles. What type of traffic did they have before? It was a call center. So we're talking about station wagons and sedans coming in and out. Now we're talking about those little Chevy trucks, those are the small ones. If you go back to that picture of the aerial view, you're going to see large trucks, if they're going to have the same ones in there, large trucks with trailers pulling, I believe they're called backhoes is what you would call them, pulling in and out across five-lane traffic on Gage. So my question is, did we do a traffic study for what it's going to do to the actual pavement? And did we do a traffic study for the safety of the people in the area, including what the free speaker mentioned, the high schoolers in the area and the safety there? And the last thing on Hayden's support, when I look at it, I find that very interesting, that Hayden's in support of it, because Hayden is on the Archdiocese ground. And the gentleman from the engineering firm, what did he state? That part of the land being rezoned is the Archdiocese. So why would they be in support of it? I mean, their land's being rezoned to open industrial. I'm guessing they're not going to add on to the high school in open, or sorry, industrial? So my assumption is, and I think it's a pretty good assumption, what I've heard around town is, the Archdiocese is selling a portion of the land to One Gas so they can expand, because if you look at their downtown facility, it's much bigger here than what they're gaining right behind on the One Gas property. If they want to make it equal, they have to gain land from Archdiocese. And then, of course, Archdiocese, my assumption is going to be in favor if they're selling the land to them. And so what I would say, and I've seen letters in support, one letter in support, and heard the comment before about, you know, we're losing our land downtown. Well, guess what? When you lose land downtown because of a government project, you get fairly compensated for it. So there's no reason to go and allow them to rezone land behind residential. It's going to crush property values, safety issues, light pollution, all that stuff, because they've already been fairly compensated for their land. So I'd ask you to vote no, and ask him to put this in another, more appropriate area of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other patrons?
Yeah, my name is Marilyn Fonce, and I live over at 510 Southwest Gage Court. And my husband and I have lived in our area for 55 years. And we've loved it where we've lived, had it quiet, and now the thought of having an industrial place right behind us, I just don't understand it. I don't understand the spot zoning. I think it needs to be residential. I just, and we live across the way from the Gage Park, and I'm wondering about the animals and the kids that play over there and stuff. It's a safety thing, I think, with all the noise and all the, the pollution and all that stuff, and all the lights. I, I would hope for you to vote no for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
With all respect to the Chair, to keep it germane to the location of, of the equipment that's moved on, you prefaced that at the beginning of your case. The location needs to be in an I-light location. It needs to be in a light industrial spot. Now, what's interesting is we've got to come up with a solution for the gas company. So we've spent millions of dollars acquiring land for industrial uses with taxpayer dollars. Look up the growth organization of Topeka, and you can see how many properties have been purchased. They've actually purchased some property for me, and that was, it's coming almost on 20 years. And so the appropriate location, so we actually have a solution for the, the gas company, so they, they won't be harmed. We could give them land, we've already paid for it. They can locate it, locate it in an appropriate place out by the bakery and, or Target Distribution, there's plenty of land, there's other places. But what would be even best for the community is we paid for the land with our tax dollars, but it will put the, the property on the tax roll. Because once they purchased the property, it came off the tax roll in the name of economic development. So in our infinite wisdom in the community, to grow our tax base, we use taxpayer dollars to buy land and then take it off the tax roll to save it for deals. So it's, you, you vote no, it's a complete sentence, no. It's even more succinct than sit down. So we've got a solution for the gas company. You want to help them, right? But they've got enough money to, to build wherever they need to, you put it in an appropriate location, and we've already, we can give them the land for free. They'll have plenty of elbow room, it's already paid for. It's really simple. Help, you're going to, you're going to, this is why people move out of Topeka. What you're going to do to the local people? And we don't need more people leaving Topeka, but this is, this, this is one of the reasons why people say, you know what, I've just had enough. You know, I can't take it anymore. And then they move. So vote no. Don't feel bad about it. Get, we've got, we just hired a new person for economic development, it's your fearless leader now at the Planning Commission. We can give them land, they'll have more elbow room, it goes on the tax rolls, and it's already paid for. Everybody wins. Thank you.
Can you speak your name real quick for the?
Yeah, my name's Henry McClure.
Thank you.
Can I submit something, some of my testimony here in writing to somebody?
Chris can take that.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Any other public?
My name's Tom Lemon. I live at 3155 Southwest Shadow Lane. I'm an attorney in Topeka. I am actually here wearing a couple of different hats. I was asked to speak by Jake Kleema. I gave him some advice on his remarks tonight, and I represent Jake and his wife. They own 423 Southwest Gage Court. But I'm also up here wearing the hat of a person that drives down Gage to access I-70 every day, and my kids go to Hayden. I've had, kids, I've had four go, three go through and one is almost graduated. I went to Hayden, my family went to Hayden, my parents went to Hayden, my grandparents and my great-grandparents went to Hayden, not all in that building, but most of us in that building. And the one thing about Gage, if you're a parent of a Hayden student, is that Gage is a little bit terrifying. And the reason is that you have between 200 and 400 kids a day accessing that in and out, and they're crossing traffic, the majority of them, or they're coming off I-70 and they're trying to get into the right lane quick enough to make that right turn. And so the I-70 Gage exit area is a bit of a nightmare anyway, but when you add a bunch of 14 through 18-year-olds, and they're all using that corridor, it's really bad. And the idea that we are putting an industrial site, and I'm speaking to the changes, because none of the changes alleviated any of these worries. And the worry is that we are sticking an industrial site next to a high school, and a high school where there aren't buses. The kids don't ride a bus to school, they drive. And so you add an industrial site next to a high school in what is otherwise a residential area, and with a cemetery across the street, and you're sticking something in a place that it doesn't belong. I get why the gas company wants it there. They own the building that's already there, they've got the ground that's already there. To them, it makes sense, and heck, if I owned the building, I'd think it'd make sense too. But it doesn't make sense for everybody else that surrounds it. And I think that the worry that I, the reason that I know the industrial site doesn't fit there is, all we've talked about tonight, or heard about tonight, is what have we done to hide the darn thing? The walls, the lack of lighting, where the lighting is. But when it comes down to it, this site is as industrial and has as intense an industrial use of any site per square foot in Topeka. And, and I respect the, the folks that have worked on this plan, I respect the people that have talked about it, but I don't think anybody could deny how intense this industrial usage is. And there is nothing about that neighborhood that is compatible with this, and there are no changes that they could make that would ever make it compatible. And I'm asking you to vote no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cook.
Sir, could I ask a question here, please? As, as an attorney, you're, I hope you're familiar with, with the way this came back to the Planning Commission from the, from the Topeka governing body, that it's, it's been a remand with directions to, for us to hear and, and evaluate changes that were made by the proponent, the applicant, following the December meeting, or maybe the November meeting, whichever one it was. But none of the revisions that are before us tonight, by my reading, touch on the traffic issue, which I think was discussed during the earlier meeting. So can you give us some justification for why we should consider traffic when, when that's not what the governing body said we should look at?
Well, number one, you should, because you have an independent ability to think on your own and make a decision as the person that's appointed to be the commissioner. And so overall, is it right? And I think that we can make decisions on right and wrong at any time, no matter whether it's on remand or not. The second thing is, I actually came to speak on this very issue at the meeting in front of this commission, and was told that I wasn't allowed to speak because public comment had closed at the last meeting. However, the folks that lived in the correct area, the, the five or six houses that live in the affected zone, were sent a notice that said they would be allowed to speak and give comment at that meeting, and they would, and, and thus they'd be allowed to bring a representative. So I think is the question on remand, are you only limited to discussion about what was remanded? I can't answer that question for you. You have a lawyer that's here that probably could, but I'm asking you to consider everything.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we are all on the same page, that it is a remand, the governing body did say, look at these particular issues. And we are an advisory body subordinate to the, to the governing body.
Well, you are an advisory body, but your decision has either a quasi-judicial or a legislative component to it, because the way you vote affects the necessities for the city council when they vote to approve it. So I think you're more than an advisory body.
Oh, we'll, we'll agree to disagree on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. With that, we will close the public testimony.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
If you, if you will allow, I'd like to at least address a couple of comments that I heard through this. You know, I heard early on about a question about stormwater. We have not proposed anything specific. We will meet all and any subdivision regulations dealing with stormwater. It will not drain off the property. It'll be handled on-site and taken care of in proper site development practice. You know, the second, second thing I want to bring up is this, this discussion about industrial zoning. It's unfortunate that we use use group categories with the same designation as traditional zoning districts, because the only thing industrial about this site is the use of an outdoor storage. There's no other industrial use on this site. The nature of a PUD, particularly in this case with a site development component to it, is that the zoning ties directly to the plan and the notes. So in order for One Gas to sell this property to another user, they would have to use it very closely to what One Gas is using it for, otherwise it would trigger an amendment, possibly either minor or major, to get back in front of this body to change uses. So what I'm getting at is, what Kansas Gas is using it for is what this thing is, is zoned for. It's for outdoor storage. There's no industrial activity going on on this site, other than the outdoor storage. And I guess the, the third thing I wanted to bring up was, was traffic flow. You know, I wanted to remind you again that in the early stages of this, when we had our pre-application meeting, we had city traffic engineer personnel at the meeting. We discussed traffic, we discussed access, we discussed the timing of when schools let out, the timing of when One Gas releases their trucks, and when they come back into the site. The traffic engineer didn't see a traffic study was necessary. One Gas offered up several solutions that were, there just didn't seem to be any interest or anything special going on with traffic that they felt rose to the level of traffic study. And that could be trip generation, it could be things that I don't totally understand as not being a traffic engineer. I just know that the, during the pre-application meeting, they did not require us to do a traffic study, and it was discussed at length, and it's in those notes, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on the matter?
Can I make an additional comment?
Uh, yes. Sure.
Again, my name's Ed Kleema. The additional comment I had is on the filling station area. And one of the things that I noticed is all the zoning on petroleum stations, you've got a 200-foot setback, as I see in the city, on those. Why does a compressed gas station not have a setback? And it gets back to the case if there's an explosion, and, and do those happen? Absolutely they do. Go on YouTube, there's several on there that's happened in the last four or five years at a filling station. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate him bringing that up, and so I actually did some measurements. And the compressor station itself is approximately 200 feet to the north from the south property line, and the fast fill stations are approximately 220 feet to the north of the south property line. So I just wanted to go ahead and make that reference. And as far as to the aspect about explosions and CNG, because that seems to go hand in hand in terms of, you know, kind of just trying to put some fear, I want to remind everybody, we are a 100% regulated natural gas distribution company, and we are subject to comprehensive federal and state safety requirements. We can't put stuff there unless we follow specific requirements outlined. And so there are safeties upon safeties, redundancies upon redundancies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public members that would like to speak? If not, we will close the public comment. And discussion by commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Buck?
I am a traffic engineer by profession, and I would agree that there, I don't foresee any real traffic issues with this usage. I do commend them for the efforts they've made on mitigation, but I also have to ask myself, does it make sense to have this type of use immediately behind homes, behind a residential area? And to be honest, it just does not make sense to me, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Two questions for Dan. First, Dan, the, I think I asked this question the first time around on this matter, the I-1 zoning piece of the PUD, it is, it is what is required, and it's, it's really the only option for the applicant to get the exterior storage, the additional parking, and the expansion of the building.
Correct.
I mean, you, you ran through the, all the different zoning classifications with the applicant, and?
Yeah, the, the expansion of the building potentially could have happened a different way, but?
I'm sorry, Dan, could you?
The expansion of the building could potentially happen a different way through zoning, but taking everything in total, the outside storage is the industrial, is the need for the industrial zoning.
Second thing, Dan, we've heard from pretty well, well-spoken folks tonight at the, at the hearing, have you heard anything or that would change, alter the staff recommendation on this matter?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak or make comment? Have any questions?
I, I do have a question for staff. So one of the questions, as I sit here and I think about everything, I know one of the things that's in the Golden Rules talks about surrounding, and zoning and use of properties nearby. And so you look at other zoning. By this being a PUD with an I-zoning, if there's subsequent zone changes proposed before the commission, or before the, the planning department, will this change to industrial as part of this PUD, will that be used as indicating that there's similar industrial zoning if there's other zoning changes proposed nearby?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Dan, just for the, just, I guess for the record here, I guess, there's an issue with that a little bit. If I were to come in a year from now on one of the adjoining properties and see I-zoning, I would certainly point out that there's, I mean, if this were approved, I would point out that there is a very limited I-zoning, but there is I-zoning on the adjacent parcel. It'd be up to planning commission and staff, planning commission, and the city council as to how much weight to give that.
Correct, that is correct, yes. There's currently C4 directly south of this property. There's currently C4 directly south of this property. If somebody wanted eye on that and pointed to this, I don't know what we would say because it's on the corner, it's meant to be commercial. I mean, there's lots of things that go into the evaluation of zoning, as you're pointing out.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're open to motions.
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Sure.
In the discussion, the Gas One indicated they would be willing to change the lighting schematic. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So how do we get that recorded that way? That they can make those adjustments?
So I think as part of a motion, you can suggest additional conditions to the approval and try to be as specific as possible. So I think I heard Commissioner Warner talk about the pole lights, a couple of pole lights along the north and west property lines that were a little closer than the other ones. Removing those, I believe, is what was talked about, and then reducing the number of wall packs on the south side of that new building, lowering the height, too. So that's what I have for notes. So if there's some discussion about how specifically what you want to do with that as a group, that would be great.
I think maybe if we have a minimum, we require the minimum foot handles of lighting versus just a... you know, I don't know where it's going to be at, but just so it's not overly lit up.
Mr. Chairperson, I believe Ms. Feeney wanted to speak.
If there's a consensus on adopting some of the changes that... was it Mr. Tabobin and Mr. Warner? About the lighting, if those could be articulated, and then they could be incorporated in a motion to... the recommendation would be to amend the recommendation to include these changes. But you would have to articulate pretty specifically what you want to see.
Okay.
And if that's not possible, if you want to give us a concept, we can come back at the next meeting with specific recommendations if that would be... it always makes me nervous to kind of amend something on the fly. So if you could... if you wanted to lay this till next month, and you could give us all a concept of what you want, then staff will come back with specific recommendations.
But Mary, if I could ask you what you're speaking to and the kind of changes that we might want to make, they still need to fall within the scope of what the governing body said, or at what point do we become essentially a new proposal?
Well, this... you would be amending your recommendation.
But relating to the amendments or revisions that the applicant made and submitted earlier, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're amending the recommendation from the December meeting?
You're... you're correct. You're amending the recommendation from the December meeting to add additional requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Freed.
Just for clarification, I believe Mr. Warner, did you also suggest reduction of the light packs also on the south side of the building addition, in addition to the storage?
Yeah.
So I wanted to be clear that it was discussed both those buildings. I've only heard the storage building, and I wanted to make sure that was in there.
Yeah, my suggestion was to go from four to two on the 7,000-square-foot building, and then on the building addition, that one has three on it right now, and two of them are pretty far to the east anyway. So I would recommend that one going from three to two. And then the other part of it was the two pole lights that are along... the two most southern pole lights that are along the west property line be eliminated.
Is there a consensus that you like the change in the lighting? Or does anyone object to maybe getting Mr. Warner to specifically identify exactly what needs to be done? Is there appetite for that?
I think I'd rather see it and then vote on it tonight than to push it off again another night.
All right. Dan, do you have enough to kind of articulate what the changes are?
I think so.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and give it a shot, and then we can make changes?
Right now? So remove the two pole lights that are closest to the south property line that are on the west side of the property. Remove those two pole lights, the closest ones. And then there's two... there's wall packs on two buildings. Reduce from four to two on the new building, and reduce from three to two on the addition, the wall packs. That's what I've got so far.
And lower.
And lower them.
Lower with fixtures that don't shine directly out.
Lower to seven feet, or I think was the...
Eight foot, be behind this fence. So... and still above a door.
Right.
Matt, did you have other... was that covered?
That was it.
Okay. So then the motion would be to amend...
Amend your recommendation to include the conditions stated by Mr. Warner, and then to recommend approval of the recommendation as amended to the governing body. So maybe take a motion first to approve the changes recommended or articulated by Mr. Warner, and then if there's sufficient... if there's a majority of voting in favor, then you would then take a second vote to amend your recommendation or approve the recommendation as amended, so...
Either way, the motion to the governing body wouldn't... couldn't be voted... couldn't be voted down, I guess? I mean, it's already been to the governing body.
Yes, but they've sent it back to you to either change it or resubmit your original recommendation. So what you want to do is change it, change your recommendation, to add the conditions articulated by Mr. Warner.
Okay.
Does everyone understand that? Okay. So maybe the first motion is just to adopt the recommendations identified by Mr. Warner. Warner and Warner.
For the lights.
For the light packs, the pole lights, the reducing the wall packs. I couldn't get it all written down, so...
I think we've got it now, so if you want to make a motion on that.
To approve just those changes.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the changes we just discussed?
Sure. I'll make a motion to amend our recommendation to include the changes as discussed and offered by Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Freed, or is there a second?
Don't meet Tris, Aaron, I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? We're all clear what it is? Okay. Chris, would you please take the vote?
Okay, let's see. Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
And Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, so that's the...
That's the adopting this concept, and then you would move to amend your recommendation... amend your recommendation incorporating the changes recommended by Mr. Warner.
So what would a no vote be in that case?
That would be you are rejecting the amended recommendation. You're saying no.
To the whole...
So to the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear for everybody?
Not exactly.
Okay. So...
So a no vote would be... a no vote would be you're not... you are deciding not to make a recommendation opposing or rejecting the rezoning. A vote in favor would recommend approval by the governing body with the changes that you've just approved. Everyone understand that? Okay.
So then we need a motion to send to the governing body, then? So move. Second?
This is Commissioner Pearson, second it.
Thank you. Are there any more discussion? Okay. Chris, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
No.
Mr. Freed?
No.
And Ms. Heron? We have three voting yes and three voting no and one abstaining.
Okay, so that is... that would be a rejection, then. You would not... well, let me look at this. Well, that would be you are denying... you are not approving the rezoning.
Does it then go to the governing body?
A recommendation of denial, yes.
Okay. I believe that covers that one, then.
Yes, it does.
All right. Action item number two, P2301, Mission Ridge subdivision number two, preliminary and final plat by Mission Ranch LLC. Staff presentation. Chairman Dean, Will Sharpe will present the subdivision report.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Commissioner.
You can give him a second if you want to. Okay.
Hello, everybody. So this is for a replat. This is a major plat of a subdivision located at 41st and Wanamaker, inside the city of Topeka. And again, it's a replat of the existing Mission Ridge subdivision, which was created back in 2004. The site comprises approximately 22 acres. In total, the subdivision will have a total of 48 residential lots included with a new major plat. I'll be talking about the plat case. There's also a zoning case associated with the plat to discuss the rezoning of the commercial and office lots that were originally on there. Mr. Treffen here will discuss that later. Getting in to... this is the original Mission Ridge subdivision from 2004. So as you can see, there are platted lots around the exterior, platted residential lots, and then you have Block A and Block B left for commercial and office use, which is what the original PUD intended. Preliminary, Matt, preliminary plat for Mission Ridge there. So Block A will have 11 additional residential lots added, taking out that commercial and office. Block B will have six residential lots added. Good thing about this major plat, it's located inside the city of Topeka. The infrastructure is already there to include the streets and right-of-way, which is already paved. Access points for the subdivision are found on 41st Street and Wanamaker. One thing that the plat will be doing is it will be removing the green space easements from Block A and Block B. However, there will still be a 40-foot drainage and drainage detention facility easement that will remain after the green space easements are removed. Again, inside the city, so water and sewage will be provided by the city of Topeka. And the original drainage report is on file and was accepted for this replat because the drainage patterns will not be changing for these residential lots. So for the comprehensive plan, the future land use does designate this area as mixed use, so a mixed use of residential, commercial, office jobs like that. That was what the original PUD and the original plat was intended for. With that mixed use designation, it had residential surrounding the plats with the commercial and office located in Blocks A and Blocks B. However, this land has remained empty and vacant since the original PUD, since the original plat from 2004. So the land use growth management plan that does call for compact growth and infill inside the city of Topeka. Our housing study does call for the type of housing that will be built at this location. So with all those factors, staff is recommending approval of the major plat.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cal.
William, was there a traffic study done, or does that relate to the zoning action?
I believe there was a traffic study done.
No traffic study required for this. Traffic study was not required for this.
Is that because of the number of dwelling units or because of all the existing infrastructure?
It's a lowering of intensity of what was approved, and you've got built streets and multiple access points.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I couldn't see from the map very well. Did you say it took away some that were platted as commercial development along the Wanamaker? Is that... was it commercial development that was... is this changing from commercial to residential? Are those commercial?
So, yes, this is the... the original plat has Block A and Block B designated for commercial and office, and that will be going away with the replat. It'll go all to residential.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just a comment. In the future, something like this, if you could provide the old plat so we could understand better, because a part of Block B didn't change, but part of Block B did, so it was hard to understand the changes. So just in the future, if you could include the old plat as well, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant presentation. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Kevin Holland, Cook Flat and Struggle Engineers. And I do have owners...
And I do have owners' representation here as well. And this is an awkward one because I wish the zoning went first before the plat. We are looking to rezone or replat this according to the rezone. If the rezone did not pass, then I don't know that we would be very eager to replat it in this configuration because it would be difficult to have the commercial and O&amp;I uses for that zoning piece that we're looking to do. But at the same time, we are looking to make this 41st and Wanamaker, obviously, a very nice piece of property in Topeka. And the commercial and O&amp;I piece of business has not pushed that far south on Wanamaker. And residential needs in this area are very significant. So we're looking to go to duplexes, high-end duplexes in this area and try to develop and help out the housing needs in this area.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. At the meeting, the public meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
There was some concern about the green space that might be taken out.
I don't know that there was a lot of issue with the green space easement because the green space easement was something that we did back 20 years ago that...
Some of the project want to keep as many of the existing trees as possible.
Correct.
And I see those existing trees over here.
Along the western edge. And we said we would try to keep as many of those existing trees as well. The only area where it gets a little tight is up in the southwest corner where the lot spacing due to the existing roadway pushes those lots. But for the sake of our property as well, it's nice to have an existing tree row and a buffer between the two properties and the two subdivisions. So we'll do everything in our ability to keep all of those trees that we can.
And one other question. I think the housing study also indicated a need for low to moderate income housing. Will any of these fulfill that?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've got a question, Ms. Vina, on... In the past, have we combined a plat and a zoning at the same time? So is that a possibility to do that?
Yes. Normally, we approve the plat and then do the zoning. I guess it... I guess what you're saying is if the zoning doesn't pass, you don't want to plat this property.
Correct.
I mean, you don't want to plat this property according to...
We would hold the existing plat just because it gives more flexibility for a commercial piece.
So if they were to go through this, we accept the plat and then reject the zoning, could they just... Could they withdraw their...
They could just withdraw the plat then?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any question... Are there additional questions for the applicant? If not, we'll go to public testimony. If there's anyone would like to speak on this matter, you have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Sue Legano and I live to the south of this proposed development. And we're happy that they're keeping the green space. That was one of our biggest concerns because all of us that are to the south of that have lived there nigh on 20 years. And we like those trees. It gives us a nice barrier. And so we're happy that that will continue. Our biggest problem is the Wanamaker Raceway that stretches from 61st Street basically down to 37th Street incorporating the 41st roundabout. And the issues with multifamily housing there. The 48 houses that are being proposed are multi. So basically, 96 families living in that area. And right now, especially during certain times of the day when traffic on Wanamaker up to the high school and the middle school and actually Jay Scheider goes past that Wanamaker, it's very difficult to sometimes get out of there. Plus, you've got Clarion Woods on the other side. So while we like the fact that they're going to develop it residentially, we're kind of opposed to the fact that we would prefer to be single-family dwellings. The potential of another 90... 48 dwellings ends up being, what, 96 possible? If it's a duplex, 96 with two people in each one of those. I mean, you have 200 people trying to get out of this area. And right now, it's just we have an area to the west of us called Shenandoah that has multifamily housing, and that area is a disaster trying to get through that area. Even in the middle of the day, there's cars on either side of the street and it's very difficult, very, very congested. And we don't want to see that happen in that area. And we're just concerned that the people... We are concerned that congestion will just continue. The other part of it that I want to bring out is that, yes, the roads are in, but there's no sidewalks or anything else. And I was hoping that that would be also included when they were going to make this a, you know, residential area. Lots of people walking through here, as you can imagine, because of the... I mean, it's right now, it just feels, it's very, very beautiful. But so those are our biggest concerns. I would hope that I would say vote yes to do it, but no for multi... Rezone it to just residential, single-dwelling residences versus multifamily residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, we will close the public hearing, discussion by commissioners. Anyone want to talk about this?
I have one question.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. She made a comment about the sidewalks. I think the sidewalks are probably put in as they sell off each lot. I just wanted to confirm that. So there will be sidewalks throughout this whole subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, we're open for a motion.
About... Mr. Chairman. Flip me for it. Just a second.
What's that, Mr. Kelp?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to forward the plat to the governing body with recommendation for acceptance of the plat and the acceptance of the public dedications.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Chris, we take a vote.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Next on the list is public hearing of Z 23-01 by Mission Ranch LLC. Staff? Do you have more to present on this?
Mr. Chairman, Ian will handle this one.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ian Truffern, Associate Planner. This evening, I'll be speaking with you about the case Z 23/01 by Mission Ranch LLC. This proposal is to rezone 21.7 acres of property southwest of 41st and Wanamaker. From its current designation, there are two PUDs associated with this property, one with M12 Family Dwelling District and the other with O&amp;I1 Office and Institutional and C2 Commercial District Use Groups. And both of these will be rezoned to M12 Family Dwelling District. Staff is recommending approval for this rezoning action. Existing conditions, to the west of this property, there are existing duplexes along Shenandoah. To the northeast and south, there are single-family residential units. The surrounding neighborhoods are predominantly suburban and rural residential in character. And the existing PUD, as mentioned previously, was intended for commercial and offices along Mission Ridge and duplexes along South Ridge and 42nd Street. The future land use map indicates this property has two designations associated with it, mixed use and urban-suburban low-density residential. As previously mentioned, the mixed use designation is intended to promote development in a compact manner. The densification of this area is in line and consistent with that designation. And the second future land use designation, urban-suburban low-density residential, is characterized by, quote, "two-family residential development up to a maximum of six dwelling units per acre." The M1 zoning designation fits exactly in that definition with six dwelling units per acre and two duplex uses. So once again, staff recommends approval with this rezoning. And have any questions?
Any questions for staff? If not, applicant presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Kevin Holland, Cook Flat and Struggle again. And easier to talk about the zoning than the plat because now we're actually talking about the meat and potatoes of what's going to go on once this is built. And what the developer is looking to do is to do high-end duplexes, 2,400 to 2,500 square foot per side, roughly in the 400,000 per side. So this is not a low-income, low-end duplex. These are the higher-end targeting, that crowd that would do that. There also is going to be a strong homeowners association associated with this duplex or with this subdivision and PUD area so that our owner and applicant understands the situation we have directly to the west, which is along Shenandoah. A lot of cars parked on there. I drive by this road every day as well. And this is something we do not want to replicate. It's difficult to go down that roadway, obviously. On sidewalks, per the building code, we would come in with sidewalks as the development progresses throughout the subdivision. But it'll be a beautiful area. And from a traffic standpoint, I know Mr. Tobin can echo that, if we're taking out O&amp;I and commercial out of this area, I guarantee our traffic counts are significantly lower than they would have been. But with that, I'll help with any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you.
Public testimony. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak on this matter? If not, not seeing it, Betty, I will close the public testimony and discussion by commissioners.
Well, I would go ahead, although I'm going to miss looking at that open field from my backyard in as much as I'll miss the opportunity to have a nice restaurant and get a drink much closer to my house. I will make a motion to approve the zone change.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the matter? If not, Chris, would you take the roll, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobin?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Next on the list is public hearing of Z 23-02 by Bear Creek Acres Trust.
Mr. Chairman, I'll handle this one. Dan Warner, the Planning Department. So the zoning change for this project is to accommodate a rural use on the property, which is basically how it's been for quite a long time. This property's been vacant and in a sort of a rural use for long before the previous zoning got approved for this property. So the existing zoning on that property is PUD with R1 and R3, a single family, and there's also some R3, single family without the PUD. That's proposed to be rezoned to RR1, which is a rural residential district. The property is about 24 acres, northeast corner of Urisch and Hantoon. Recommending approval. So we look at zoning around the property. You've got kind of a mixture of zoning here, but primarily you've got larger lot RR1 properties that are outside the city. This particular property is inside the city and is proposing to go to RR1. There is some, what I would call, urban development west to the east of this property and also farther to the north. So it is lying in a bit of a transition area. This area has been slowly transitioning from rural uses to urban uses over the years, including a proposal to rezone this property at one point in time, but that development did not happen. The area is noted as mixed use on our land use plan. I think it's important to note here, this... Our future land use plan is really sort of the vision for that area. It's what is expected to happen at some point, right? So it's not necessarily in the next 10 years or 20 years. It's just, you know, if and when this property, this owner or another owner decides to rezone this property to an urban use again, we will apply this mixed use category to that property and hope we get some commercial probably with some residential as well. But that's not what we have here today. So actually rezoning this to RR1 will keep this area in a holding pattern, so to speak, and it will maintain itself in 24 acres and be available for urbanization at a future date. Without commissioners, staff is recommending approval of the zoning to RR1.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is there anybody representing the applicant to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. Angela Sharp with Bartlett &amp; West. And I'm here representing the owners of the property, Becky and Mason Leach, and they are in attendance this evening, the only ones left in the audience now. So try not to take up too much of your time so we can all go watch the KU game. So as Dan mentioned, the previous owner had a vision for this property. And what he looked at was a very dense kind of a cluster development with small lots and homes within this whole 24 acres. And if you all have driven past the property, it's pretty rolling terrain, heavily treed. And in order to install the infrastructure associated with that dense of a development, it was going to be fairly expensive. And so that has not come to fruition since 2008, when the latest amendment to the PUD was done. That owner has since passed, and the current owner have a different vision for the property. The existing single-family home is their home, and they currently raise some small plant starts that they sell at farmers' markets and things like that. And then they also have some animals on the property, chickens and goats and that kind of thing. And that is what they would like to do with the property moving forward. And so they're bringing this zoning case, and then we will have an associated minor plat come along with that that will vacate those road rights of way so that they can fence the property the way they would like to be able to use the property as they currently are. So basically, it's we're just asking for them to be able to continue using the property as they are now. And then, as Dan mentioned, moving forward, if they were to sell the property and, you know, development does come further out into this area, then it would be available for a future change in land use that they would then come before the Planning Commission again. So at the neighborhood information meeting, we only had a couple of folks attend that, but the ones that did attend were in favor of the case. And the folks I've spoken to on the phone have been in favor of it, both from a perspective of reducing the proposed density of development for this area. And then also, they all expressed that they just really like Becky as a neighbor and like what she's doing with the property. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Is there any more questions for Angela? All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll open it up for public testimony. Would anyone like to speak on this issue with the public? Not a lot left, so we'll go ahead and close the public testimony. Discussion by commissioners. Any discussions? Any discussions? If not, I'd be open for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to recommend approval of the request for rezoning from PUD Plan Unit Development with R1 and R3, single-family dwelling district uses, and R3, single-family dwelling district to RR1, rural residential district.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussions or comments? This one's going quicker than the first one. Chris, would you take a vote, please?
Okay, Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
And Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Section E, Communications to the Commission. Dan?
Commissioners, I'll just let you know, we are on track for five cases for the March meeting, five zoning cases, so that's a lot. That's more than we've had. That's more than we've had at a meeting in a while, so we'll see if we stay on track with that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may say something, the One Gas rezoning, I want to make sure I understand what you all want. We had three options: we could resubmit our original recommendation, we could submit an amended recommendation, or we could submit a new recommendation. The motion to amend the One Gas rezoning recommendation failed, so I'm assuming that you want to make a new recommendation recommending denial of the One Gas zoning. Is that my understanding? You want to deny the One Gas rezoning in toto?
That was my intent.
Understanding? If that's my understanding, I want to make sure that it is articulated. So could I have a motion to submit a new recommendation to the governing body to deny the One Gas rezoning?
So let me ask you a question, Mary. So it was a 3 to 3 to 1, so the motion failed because there wasn't a majority.
Correct.
So if we make a motion to recommend no, and it's 3 to 3 to 1, then that means the recommendation is yes then. Is that correct?
Well, now I'm confused. I'm confused, so what are you saying?
So, I mean, I thought we were, kind of understood it was an all or nothing, it was either the recommended, or it was move forward with a recommended, or it was to move forward with a recommendation not to approve. I didn't, I thought that's what the choices were, but if we voted 3 to 3 to 1, so it's a tie, so the motion didn't pass.
Fails, correct.
If we now make a motion to move forward to reject the zoning, and that goes 3 to 3 to 1, then that means we've rejected not to recommend, so that means then it's a vote to recommend to approve the zoning, correct?
Because the original recommendation would basically stand.
In effect, so that's why, to make that motion that way, if, my understanding was, we've already voted to make the no recommendation, that it was either a yea or a nay vote for either the amended or no recommendation, that the original one was gone at that point.
Yeah, Mary, I agree with that. You have to make sense of what's already happened. If there's another vote, and if the vote changed, then, you know, what are all these folks going to think? You know? Yeah, I think we're done with it.
You think we're done with it?
Yeah, I don't think we have any choice.
Okay, but the...
So my question, is there a clear interpretation of what we decided? Because now I feel like I'm not clear on what we decided. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's why I'm inquiring, is because I'm not sure I understand. So when we go back to the governing body, we are not recommending the original, we're not resubmitting our original recommendation, right?
I think you just have to tell the governing body there was a motion to approve the rezoning, and the motion failed, and that's the end of it, and there's really nothing more that can be added to it, I don't think, at this point. They can always send it back to us again, if they want to...
But at that point, they really don't know what your recommend... There really is no recommendation. I don't understand your recommendation.
Well, again, so what would happen if we had, if there wasn't amended, if it was just the original, and there was a tie to approve, and there was a tie, then it would go up as there was, it was, there was no, it was a recommendation against, or there was no recommendation for.
Right.
And I think that's how this would operate the same way, it's just we had an amended thing we were voting on instead of the original, because we voted, the first vote to me was, we voted to bypass the original and move forward with an amended.
Right.
And so then our choice was either we pass the amended, or the amended gets rejected, in which case we're rejecting the zoning.
Well, the first one passed, right?
Right, the amendment.
The amendment to the original passed.
Yeah, Mr. Warner's amendment passed.
So...
But then you voted, there weren't sufficient votes to approve the recommendation as amended.
I feel like that's better stated, that there weren't sufficient votes for approval.
Right. So that means, so that means there's not a recommendation to approve.
But then what does the governing body do?
They send it back to us, I think they send it back to the Planning Commission, not for any additional hearings or anything, just to clarify the record.
Do they, do they need to send it back to us?
Well, no, they don't have that option.
They don't have to, but I...
I mean, they can...
They're going to vote, they're going to...
They're going to vote.
I mean, they can vote either way, regardless, we're just giving them a recommendation, but they're free to vote how they want it. Right, they wanted us to take additional information, and we did that, and then we did a vote, we did an amendment based on information as it related to the changes, and then the motion was put to approve that amended, but it did not get sufficient votes to pass, so there's...
So their options are to adopt your recommendation, or revise or amend and adopt your recommendation, but I guess my point is, what, they're going to say, what are they recommending to us? And I can't answer that.
And that's my question, if we didn't have an amended, if we took this originally, and the vote was 3 to 3, and there was a vote to approve, and the vote was 3 to 3 to 1, what would you tell the city council at that point? Because the motion failed.
Yeah, the motion failed, so there's no recommendation.
I mean, I think that's what you tell them, there was an amended motion, amended recommendation, and it was to vote, and the vote failed to approve the recommendation.
We voted to amend the recommendation, and we, that passed, so they could go back and look at what we amended. If I were them, I think I'd go back to what we voted in favor of amending, and if they're going to vote for the project, then that's what they would vote on.
Sure, yeah. Why don't we take maybe a three-minute recess, just to... Or maybe, maybe what we should do is go into executive session under attorney-client privilege to discuss this, because I can't really give legal advice if I don't understand what you all want. So if I could have a motion to recess into executive session under the attorney-client provision for five minutes?
I will make the motion to go into executive session for purposes of attorney-client privilege to discuss legal advice relating to the recommendation on the One Gas Zone Change, and for, to come back into regular session in five minutes.
Second?
Second.
Do we need to vote on it then? Could you please take the call?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Kelp?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Coming out of executive session, no action was taken. All right, we've heard from the staff, any comments, questions from the council?
I just wanted to get a quick update on the missing middle projects, if there's anything going on with that.
I think we're at a point where we've got a little more staff, which is great, and we've, what we are going to try to do is get a committee, a work group together to review the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. We have a draft of that, and then possibly some parking changes, so we've been working behind the scenes and hope to start meeting with some folks soon.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for tonight? Okay, that not being the case, we're adjourned. Yes, sir.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to give you an update on what I can, so right now, I'm still in the capacity serving as interim planning director, and at this point, I do not know the direction or timeline in which it's going to be. We're still figuring a lot of things out as we restaff and kind of work through some of the change that's taken place, but I can give you an update that Mike Hall joined our team as the land use planning manager last week, so that's been great for this group to have some extra efforts onboard. And then I asked, and she gave the blessing for me to share, but Chris Wagers is actually going to be accepting a position with utilities, so as you can imagine, she will be sorely missed, so we are actively in the search to somehow try to find someone to replace her, which feels impossible, but yeah.
Motion to deny transfer.
Yeah. Thank you, approved. But, yeah.
Okay.
Not at this point in time.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say congratulations, Chris.
Will this be your last meeting, then?
Not totally sure, it depends on...
Maybe.
A definite maybe.
You probably scared it away with the five coming up next month. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.